My computer just said it.
Yeah, I'm showing seven too, so. I hereby call this regular meeting of the City of Bloomington City Council to order for February 11th. Please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. Thank you very much. Will the clerk please take the attendance roll for this evening?
Alderman Fazini.
Present.
Alderman Froen.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Stern.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Purcell.
Here.
Mayor Stockton.
Here. Okay, our first order of business this evening is to receive up to five public comments. We actually had nine people apply, so we did a little random drawing up here. The clerk shuffled them and I picked out five. And I'll just do them in the order that they were picked. The first is Patty Geske. It's Patty here. And we'd ask that you approach and please give your name again and your address.
Hi there. My name is Patty Geske. It's G-E-S-K-E. I live at 1020 East Front Street.
Okay, please, go ahead Patty.
Okay, I, by living on Front Street, of course, we're concerned with the proposition that Mr. Shirk has to industrialize the area that is now a green space at the corner of Washington and McLennan. We feel as a contingency in our neighborhood that this could be even more traffic congestion, which I know you have heard before, that we've said. We're also concerned with the merchants that would be coming into that apartment dwelling because their, their delivery people would have to park trucks to unload things and so forth. We're concerned about that. And we don't know where extra parking would be if anyone had visitors to any of the set apartments, and they're only allowed two spaces each. We're wondering about the impact it would have, not only on traffic, but on schools, and particularly on Front Street and McLennan Street as well. That's basically what we wanted to discuss and hope that there have been thorough investigations as far as traffic. We're also concerned about what roads are going to be blocked off when this construction does take place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next card is Alton Franklin. And I know you know how this works.
Yes, sir. My name is Alton Franklin. I reside at 508 Patterson, Bloomington, Illinois. Number of things on my mind, and three minutes is hardly enough to cover them all, but I'm going to do my best. I was confused by the sudden decision, it appears, to table managed competition, especially when on February the 5th, Panograph spoke to an opening that's coming up now for someone to do fundraising for the BCPA. So instead of utilizing a prime opportunity to go with something that is most efficiently outsourced, where you provide a certain percentage of the funds raised to the individual or organization that does the fundraising, instead, we're going to add to the almost $150 million shortfall with the pension funds. And especially with regards to the IMRF, since they'll be a municipal employee, and that's only a little north of 30 percent funded. I am deeply disturbed that when a good opportunity arises, we find something else to do. The other point that I'd like to make is in regards to the appointee for Ward One. There's one individual that went through the time and effort to get on the ballot and to be suddenly subverted, and that's what it is. It's a usurpation. If somebody stepped in and utilized some kind of influence in order to get there, whether or not it was their resume, don't know, don't care. It's inappropriate. There's one person on the ballot and no effort was made by the other individual. That, to me, is just wrong. It smacks of political partisanship, and I thought that this city council was nonpartisan. That's the way I've always heard it, but that's not the way it reads. I am growing increasingly disgusted with the things that I'm seeing. We made some minor progress, for which I lauded the council at another time that I spoke up here. But now, we're sliding back into doing things for all the wrong reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alton. Becky Bowles. Becky, please. Well, the microphone's about right for you, I think. And state your name and address, please.
I'm Becky Bowles, and I live at 1018 and a half East Front Street.
Please, go ahead.
Many of the residents in the area of East Front, Grove, McLennan, and Washington would like to express a few concerns. When we spoke at the planning board and zoning board meetings, we didn't have much time to prepare our thoughts, and we are sorry if we emphasize the traffic concerns on Front Street. But over the past month, my neighbors and I have had some time to really examine our neighborhood, and we still have traffic concerns in the area around the proposed property. We know that Washington is a major road in Bloomington. However, the small stretch of road from Colton to the Constitution Trail is a busy area on Washington Street. And there are daily commuters, cement trucks, and buses that use Davis and McLennan as a cut-through across Washington. When a car turns left off of McLennan, there's about two car lengths before they get to Davis Street, which doesn't give the driver much reaction time for cars leaving Davis Street. There also isn't a turn lane on Washington for the vehicles that will be turning into the business area. We are concerned with the exits and entrances around the property. We feel that they could cause many accidents and traffic congestion for the area. We also feel that the exits and entrances on McLennan will bring more traffic up Front Street. The additional traffic can make Front Street hazardous for the residents. We would like to ask the council to do a traffic study in the area. We would like to ask you to table your decision. Until this traffic study has been done on Washington and McLennan, and if not, I'd just like my thoughts on the record for the future, so that if we need to ask the city to make any street adjustments, like a traffic light on McLennan, or parking on one side on Front Street, in the future, we can at least refer to these minutes at this meeting. Another compromise we're thinking is maybe to reduce the number of exits and entrances on McLennan. A few bullet points about McLennan is, it's a bus route and a bus stop. The boards had meat shop, Parks and Semi on McLennan during delivery times, which makes the road a one-lane during that time. McLennan is wider at Washington, and then it narrows by four feet as it gets to Front Street. So the street actually narrows in. Cement trucks from Grove cut through McLennan, traffic from Davis Street cuts through McLennan. There's no tree lawn on McLennan, which means widening it in the future may be an issue. So McLennan, in short, it's a small street. So thank you for your time and your listening ears.
Thank you. Next person selected is Bruce Meeks. Bruce Meeks? Okay. Yeah, I see you.
Bruce Meeks, one for Bright Street, Bloomington, Illinois. Good evening to the elected officials and fellow citizens. I want to start first by a comment that I get tired of hearing from a man I consider quite a patriot, even though he's in the engagement industry. Craig Ferguson says on his show every night, "It's a great day for America." I address you tonight with my comments as a longtime resident in the number-one ward of Bloomington. After the February 28th council meeting, I had a short discussion with Mayor Stockton. It was clear to me in his remarks at that time, and that of others in the room, that he already decided whom was going to be appointed to the vacated alderman's seat. As has been clearly stated numerous times by the very aldermen and all their women present at this meeting, that these seats that they hold are not theirs, but ours, the voters and citizens. Now, it seems my intuitive prediction has come true. Even prior to this meeting and prior to getting all the applications or interviewing all of the applicants, the decision was made. The course of action laid in and executed. So here we are in Ward One, pondering what occurred behind closed doors, or arranged before the ink was dry on the letter of resignation of our seat, our seat, representing us. Of course, we will never see the emails, or know the private discussions and primary meetings that occurred, or didn't occur. I don't know. I don't have a body of evidence. Unless somehow, maybe, the legal system brings out the details. But instead, this process and how it was predetermined, its unfolding planned events will, for all of history, have the clouds of pondering and doubt. This is not a great day for the voters and residents in the number-one ward here in the City of Bloomington. Making the choice of filling a seat with anyone, anyone, I don't support either candidate standing here, and I will not support either candidate after I leave here. Anyone that is campaigning to be duly elected is not the right choice for this situation and for this short term of an appointment. But instead, history of this evening will record that this is pure partisan politics. This council is legally formed to be a nonpartisan elected governing body. Instead, we have the same old gerrymandering methods that have been, are the undertow of holding back our city for decades, which, for example, was done, in my opinion, on the redistricting of the wards some months ago. This, in my opinion, has hurt us as urban planning, citizen involvement, and growing in much larger manufacturing and business states.
That's the...
Prove me wrong by your actions and not your words.
I would like to note that our rules prohibit us from replying to any allegations made up here, so that's your free time to say what you wish. The last speaker this evening is Kate Watson. It's Kate.
Kate Watson, 1016 East Front Street, Bloomington, Illinois. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Front Street again, right? I know you're probably tired of hearing about that. What I would like to say is that, in regards to the SHIRK project, I feel that we, the members of Front Street and the surrounding area, have been painted as the opposition. And I want you just to know that we're not opposed to the project, per se. What we are is trying to voice our concerns, and I truly feel that we, previously at the different meetings, we didn't really express what our concerns are in a way that led the groups or the boards to believe, you know, to understand what we were trying to convey. And we're not familiar with the Planning Commission, we're not familiar with the zoning board, and certainly not familiar with your procedures here. But what we are familiar with is McLennan Street, and just how different it truly is. What I would like, truly, before you vote and decide on this project as is, is that you all go to McLennan Street and physically take a look at it, and see the narrowing of it, and see the different traffic coming at it right now, when there's nothing there, to see the Davis Street zipping through, the cement trucks, the city buses, the school traffic. I would really, really appreciate it if you would take a look at it in person, as opposed to the way that it looks on the sketch, just to get a true idea of what our concerns are, so you can understand that we're not here just because boo hoo, Front Street gets it again. No, we're truly concerned about it. I know we've asked for a traffic study, and I do understand that the last one was done around 2009. I have lived on the 1,000 block of Washington and Front Street for over 15 years, and I can truly tell you that in the last three or four years, traffic has changed significantly, especially on McLennan. So I don't know that I, if I am stepping out of bounds, I hope I'm not, but what we'd really like to do is see you move the item, 7G and H, from the consent agenda to the regular agenda tonight, to give you all a chance to go to McLennan Street and see what we're talking about. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Again, we appreciate people's viewpoints. We may not agree with them all, but it certainly is your right to come up here and say them. This time, we, I don't believe we have any recognition or appointments, so we'll pass through item number six and move to the consent agenda that was just mentioned. The consent agenda contains items that the staff, at least, considers not necessarily discussion and a separate vote is necessarily needed. We understand that sometimes people disagree with that, and any single council member can pull an item off for a discussion if they wish. It does not take a vote of the council, and very often, people go to their alderman and ask that that be done. If an item is pulled, it will become part of the beginning of the regular agenda and will be separately discussed and voted upon by this council. So at this time, I'm going to ask members of the city council, is there anything you'd like to see pulled from the current consent agenda? Okay, I see no indications of pulling an item. That being the case, is there a motion on the consent agenda? Rob?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Jim?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda for this evening. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on this, a yes vote is to approve the consent agenda?
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Froen.
I do not have any financial or business interest in any of the items listed in the consent agenda, and I vote yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Stern.
I was hoping to comment on the consent agenda. Can't be done at this point?
No, no.
I vote yes.
I'm sorry, she did not under our...
I vote yes.
Okay.
Alderman McDade. Yes. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda passes. That now brings us to the regular agenda for this evening. The first item is the appointment of the Ward One Alderman. No, it's okay. I'm sorry, I meant to bring that in. We, we had three applicants, former Alderman Gibson, Alan Gibson, was up here and had a nice visit with Alan, and we reminisced about some things and how things have changed also. I also met with Kevin Lauer. We had a discussion about aviation and that type of thing. We also talked quite a bit about some of his feelings, and I talked to some of his recommendations, and it became clear to me that he was very passionate about some of the things that he felt. And then I talked to my eventual nominee, Jamie Mathie, and based upon items such as his knowledge of city issues, his involvement in some of the things in the city, his promise of commitment of time, and openness to talk to the citizens. It is my belief that he is the best person to fill that position, even if it is for only a little bit over two months. The law requires that I make an appointment. That is based upon my best judgment. I realize from some of the speakers today that there may be some people that strongly disagree with my judgment in that matter. However, I still have to, it's my duty to make that appointment, and I have done so. But at the same time, the city council has the ability, it has to confirm that appointment. So I hereby officially nominate Jamie Mathie to fill the unexpired term of Bernie Anderson for Ward One, and I ask that the council go along with that in confirming that appointment. Rob?
Mayor, I make a motion that we confirm your appointment of Jamie Mathie to the Ward One Alderman position until the next election.
Okay, is there a second? Karen?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to confirm that. With that, I would like to invite Mr. Mathie up and give the council the opportunity to, first to give you an opportunity to say a few things, but then I want to give the council an opportunity to ask questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Jamie Mathie. I've lived at 611 East Washington Street for the last 10 years. It's in the northern part of Demet's Grove. My wife, Kelly, and I have been residents there and active with our neighbors in the Demet's Grove area. We own Kelly's Bakery and Cafe in downtown Bloomington. I also founded, one of the co-founders of Vidia Technology Group, it's a computer company as well. Between the two companies, we have about 35 employees. I've been very active in the community, in the Downtown Bloomington Association, the Sunrise Rotary Group, and just various other community organizations. Kelly and I have always had a strong policy of not saying no when people have asked us to volunteer. I'm interested in the position, and I'm running as the writing candidate for Ward One. Originally, I was going to support Bernie. I felt like Bernie was doing a good job, and I appreciated that, and we had actually offered to help Bernie in whatever way he needed to. When Bernie was unable to continue, I decided that I was going to step in and run as the writing candidate. Things that I'm passionate about, you know, living in an older neighborhood, I'm very passionate about the architecture, the integrity of the older neighborhoods, our infrastructure that holds them all together. As a business owner, I want to make sure that the city continues to be involved in economic development. I think the city's got a very important role to play in economic development. And also, continued safety. You know, we, we very much appreciate the Bloomington PD. We've, we've had a couple of incidents in our neighborhood and at our house, and the support and the response, excuse me, the response was amazing. Thank you very much for your consideration. I'm honored that you put me forward.
Okay. Jamie, we're going to allow the council to ask questions, and I'd like to start out. In the last 24, 48 hours, there was a question raised about something that happened, I think in 1995, and you and I have discussed that, and I have to tell you that it, that did not deter me from my appointment of you. But I think we'd better bring that out in the open and allow you to tell the people what you told me and what actually occurred back then.
When I was a college student and attending Heartland, we had an apartment in East Normal, and we did something stupid. We, we had this idea that we were going to watch Monday Night Football, and I had a big TV, and the guys across the hall had cable, and so they strung the cable across the hall and connected my TV to it, and we watched Monday Night Football that night. The landlord happened to come into the building that night, and they saw the cable, and he turned us in, and we all got misdemeanor fines from the Bloomington, from the Normal Police Department for theft of service. I did not know the implications of what we had done at the time. I realized that we had screwed up, so I just accepted the fine, and I paid the fee and moved on about it, and I'd kind of forgotten about it. It was, you know, it was 1995, I was 22 years old. Since then, you know, I think that a lot has changed in life, you know? Met a good woman, fell head over heels, married her, started some businesses, did a lot of volunteer hours, but there's, you know, I don't have anything to hide. It was stupid youthful indiscretion, and it's out there, and, you know, it is what it is, I think.
Okay. Other questions? Rob?
If Bernie Anderson had decided not to run, would you still be, would you have pursued a writing candidacy? Would you have actually done a petition, or would you have stayed out entirely?
I would have run. I actually, there was, there were rumors that Bernie was considering running for mayor, and I actually called Bernie and I said, "If you're running for mayor, I'm going to run for Ward One." He said, "No, those are just rumors," and I said, "Okay, then if you're going to continue to represent Ward One, I will support you."
Dave? Mr. Mathie, what concerns me a little bit is just kind of the way that this has popped up right in the 11th hour. And so as I've thought about that some today, I guess I understand, and I want to acknowledge that I think we all did things in our late teens and maybe early twenties that were not good decisions. They weren't good things to do. I guess my concern is, is that, I guess I just need to be certain that there's nothing else. Is there anything else out there that's, was a, something that happened, even if it was when you were 22 years old? was, when you were 22 years old?
No, there's nothing else that's happened like that ever. No, that's the only thing that I know of. Some speeding tickets?
And I would acknowledge speeding tickets for myself as well. Is it correct, do I understand, because I've been somewhat out of the flow here the last few weeks, has former Alderman Anderson, has he endorsed your candidacy?
He's endorsed my write-in candidacy. He has not endorsed the mayor's appointment because he did not feel that was appropriate. He specifically told the mayor, told me, and has told the media that he has nothing to say about that whatsoever, but he has endorsed my write-in candidacy.
Okay. So there's nothing else out there, right?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I will just add to that, that we did have a local police background check done and it did show the 1995 situation and it did show some speeding tickets. The report I got back is that there was nothing else. Now that is not an exhaustive multi-week background check where they start calling all your neighbors and that type of thing. So if something happened 30 years ago in a distinct community and so on, I acknowledge that we may not have found that, but locally, that's all we could find also in terms of any type of criminal or misdemeanor background check.
Well, I hope it didn't happen 30 years ago because I'd have been in fourth grade, so.
Well, I remember doing some things in fourth grade too, so.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm going out of office. No background checks, please. Jim.
Mayor, I think this question is more to you than it is to Jamie. Well, it isn't to you, it is to you. And my thought in this whole process, and I want to be respectful of those that are very loyal to their wards, but as Alderman Anderson made his decision in late January, whatever date that was, I would have assumed that we would have left that seat vacant and not made an appointment. My thought was that Ward One can be represented by the rest of the Council. And a couple of things fed into that in the sense that we really don't have a policy among ourselves with respect to what happens when a member is absent and something is on the agenda that involves their ward. We don't have any procedure that indicates we're going to lay this over. So I think maybe discussion for another day is, maybe we need to tie this down a little bit. And this is not a speech about ward or community at large, but, you know, there's eight of us up here plus a mayor and we ought to be able to speak for anybody that's absent for whatever reason and not be delayed by somebody's absence. So I thought of that and I thought, over the years, we've had a number of Aldermen that have resigned for different reasons, whether it's a moving situation, a health situation, or whatever. And we've had a variety of periods in which those vacancies have been filled. This one has been filled very quickly, so in some respects, I give you credit for that. But just a word or two from you as to what your thought was. Why is it necessary? Why is it recommended? Why is it appropriate to fill the spot for basically March and April as opposed to leave it vacant?
Okay, and I have to admit that that was one of the things that immediately occurred to me, you know, can we just avoid any contention and so on and not do that? And the simple answer is state law. I'm required, I believe, Todd, under state law to make this appointment. So, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Just want to make sure I understand that. The state law is what? Did it be, did an appointment be made within X number of days of a resignation or, tell me what that means.
60 days, I believe.
Okay, so you had no choice.
I had no choice.
But to make an appointment.
Right. Now, I had a choice in whom was appointed, but I had no choice in the, I had to make an appointment under.
That helps. Thank you very much.
Okay. Other? Stephen.
Oh, I'm next, okay.
Now, you were first.
Hi, Jamie, how you doing? I have nothing personal against Jamie or anything, you know, you've done the past or anything. I'm not worried about speeding tickets, I've got you beat on that, so. If they went by speeding tickets, I probably would have never gone to the Council. Nothing else. But I really kind of feel, you know, it's very similar to the State's Attorney race where they weren't going to put Foster or Jason Chambers in there, they would put Dozier in there to cover that space until the two people ran it off. It would have been ideal, obviously, if you'd been running for the office and Mr. Lauer's running for the office too and Bernie resigned and we could, you know, make that decision at that point, maybe to put Gibson or somebody else in there for the two months. So I'll be voting no tonight because I think on the principle, I think you run as a writing candidate, that's great, but I think there is an advantage of being in there for two months and four meetings, so I'm going to vote no on that. It may pass tonight, that's fine or whatever, but, you know, I'll go with whatever the rest of the Council says, but I just think, in all fairness, I really think that it should be somebody that's not running for the race appointed two months before the race. Thank you.
I'm not sure that was a question, but is there anything you, is there an answer to that that you want to make?
I respect your opinion.
Yeah. Mboka.
Sure, I guess my question is for you, Mayor. Could you tell us a little bit about each of the three candidates and what led you to nominate Jamie over the others?
Sure, I can summarize that a little. Again, I didn't do a formal rating system and I can't give you, you know, somebody had 87% and somebody had 83 or something. But as I said, it was based upon discussion, I think I spent at least an hour with each of the candidates. I followed up on some references that were given. I went out and looked at social media sites on the people. I looked back at past activity of the candidates. I mean, those are some of the main things I recall thinking about. Obviously, we did the Level One background check. So those are the types of things. And as I said, it's very difficult because each candidate, I can't say that, I have to say that Alan probably could have done the job because he's done it before. I have to say that Kevin Lauer, I found him very passionate, very dedicated to some of his ideas. Jamie I had worked with in the past. Kevin I really didn't know and he did speak here, what, about a month or five weeks ago, something like that. That was really the first time I had talked to him. With Jamie, we had worked on some things before, but we weren't really that well acquainted. And to address some of the concerns earlier, that there's a conspiracy going on and so on, I have to say, and Jamie, I'd ask you the same question, other than going back months or so when we maybe met on some downtown issue or met, you know, set hi to each other at a event someplace, I will state, and I'm going to ask you to state too, that we had no conversation either in person or with the telephone or via email from the time that I heard through the grapevine that you were going to run and the time I actually sat you down in my office for an interview. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So, again, I want people to know that there wasn't some type of a secret behind-the-scenes deal going on here. I tried to approach this with a very open mind and my honest opinion is that, in the way I look at things, Jamie was the best applicant. So, again, I think I'm getting asked more questions here than the nominee. So I'd ask, are there any other questions?
Ethan trying to ask a question.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. Did I just understand you to say that a background check was done so this matter from several years ago would have already come up? So you knew about the theft?
It came up after, the results actually came up after the appointment because we did not do a background check on all three of the individuals.
You did not?
No.
Yeah. And I appreciate your candor about it and you certainly have every right in the world to explain it. And I'm glad that you're getting that opportunity because that's definitely the right thing, due process and every right in the world. One question is expungement. This, I believe, a Class A misdemeanor, is that right? Could be expunged. Apparently, you didn't have it taken off your record and I'm just curious, wouldn't that be the logical thing to do for a first offense unless there was some other reason why it couldn't be expunged?
There's no reason. I probably could have done it. Like I said, I just moved on. I could have gone back and tried that, but, you know, I was wrong. I did it. I paid my fine to, you know, and I just moved on. I didn't really ever think anything else of it, so.
And it never came up or affected, I mean, affected you, so you just didn't think it was important to have it expunged?
No, it's never come up and, you know, I mean, of, you know, background checks for any of the jobs that I've ever held, it's never been an issue, so I just, I don't know, kind of almost didn't remember it was there and just moved on with my life.
You sort of forgot about it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I said, thank you for that. My honest concern too is about the process of appointing people to the Council and the fact that we have two candidates. We have two candidates here. We have Jamie, who's running a write-in candidacy, and we have Kevin, who's a declared candidate who's, you know, gone through the whole process of the petition and got on the ballot and all that. And then we have Alan Gibson. I'm really confused that last time we had an appointment, Council had the opportunity to interview them, to see their resumes, to meet with them, and this time, Council had no opportunity, really, I mean, I appreciate your email over the weekend, but the weekends are kind of taken up. So, you know, the advice in consent, I'm really missing here. But also the fact that, taking Stephen's point, just as when there was a State's Attorney opening, a candidate was appointed who was not a candidate, you know, a fill-in, an appointee, Judge Dozier, was appointed to be the State's Attorney. And he was not running, so it didn't give anyone any advantage. And I think it's very, very important, the city, the Council is nonpartisan. I don't think we should behave in a partisan way or give anyone an advantage in any way in an election. Now you say Alan Gibson could have done it, you think, or you suppose, and you didn't make that statement about Kevin Lauer. I'm quite sure, in my own opinion, knowing Kevin, that Kevin could certainly do it. That's my opinion and I'm sure Jamie could. Alan Gibson did do it. He did it for four years and there isn't, in my mind, any question that Alan could have been brought back in as a candidate who's not running, as a fair way to be fair to all parties concerned. And I'm very disappointed that we're giving, in my opinion, a very large advantage to one candidate. And in closing, I will say one other thing. I'm sure that you didn't, you know, discuss it or whatever, but of course, we have had some pretty very articulate and long emails from you, Jamie. Correct me if I'm wrong regarding downtown and the FAR study, which I believe you thoroughly support. And, you know, if you want to comment on that, feel free to do that. But I think, I mean, you certainly are very well-known to me from your emails and also from coming down on downtown issue. You own two businesses downtown and such. So I certainly think that we know you, you know, from that standpoint. In fact, I think you were even president of the Downtown Bloomington, were you president at one point?
Two years.
Two years, yeah. So anyway, I think, Jamie, I think you're well-known to us and, you know, I mean, that's all well and good. But to say that, you know, we think of all the candidates equally, I'm not sure about that. So anyway, that's my opinion and I do appreciate your stepping up and I appreciate your candor and your honesty and thank you.
Anything else? Jamie, is there anything you want to say in closing?
You know, if I could real quick, Judy, Alderman Sterns, I was president of the DBA for two years and you're right, I did support economic development in the downtown area. And, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear, there was two different FAR plans. There was the Main Street Corridor Plan, which raised a lot of conversation, I think would be the easy way to say that, regarding form-based code. And then as a separate plan, a separate time period, there were the Downtown Bloomington Master Strategy and that was the one that I did support. There were pieces of that that were controversial as well and it was not adopted by the Council, but there are also pieces of that that are very well-developed and fabulous information. So I just want to make sure we're clear that there was two different reports that just happened to be done by the same guy.
Go ahead and have a seat and I think it's time to vote on the motion. The motion is to confirm the appointment of Jamie Mathie as the replacement Alderman for Bernie Anderson in Ward One. A yes vote will support that motion and we're going to do this by roll call vote.
Alderman Sathini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Miller Lamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
No.
Yes. Okay, the vote is seven to two in favor. This time, I would ask soon-to-be Alderman Mathie to come up and take the oath of office and then we'll seat you in Bernie's former spot. Madam Clerk, will you please swear in the new Alderman?
And Mayor, if we, you know, could ask Mrs. Mathie to come up if she wants to stand next to her husband as he gets sworn in?
Yeah, sure. Does anyone have a camera that we always allow? Come on around back, you'll get a better.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Jamison, Jamie Mathie.
I, Jamison, Jamie Mathie.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position.
To the position.
Of Alderman for Ward One.
Of Alderman for Ward One.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jamie, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. [applause] Yeah, we've got to fly over the podium and...
Yeah, you have a different seat now. Well, welcome to the council, and I don't, did you have a chance, did, did we get you a packet, or?
I got one.
Okay, yeah, that, I guess it would have been presumptuous to have given you a packet, but I'm glad you took that approach because you are entitled to vote at this point. We now move to item number 8B. This is a, I was contacted and asked to place on the, we were asked to place on the agenda discussion of a motion to remove managed competition policy from the table. I think in January, we, we voted because of some questions on the language to, to table that, at least temporarily. Since that time, we've received some comments from Alderman about how that could be improved. A second version was issued. I think we've already received at least two comments on that version, and we will not be voting tonight on, on that. I don't think that, under the way it was structured in the agenda, that we can vote on that. So the purpose is not to discuss the language of that, or whether or not it should be ultimately passed. The purpose tonight is just to pull it off the table so that we can continue to refine and eventually vote on it, one way or the other. So with that, Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment a little bit on the status of that just very quickly, because again, I don't want to get into the details of it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I, I think it might also bear for us to just mention, too, that back on January 14th, the council was missing two Aldermen due to illness, medical conditions, so we were dealing with seven instead of the nine Aldermen. And, and so like you say, that that request was to at least come back, as, as the corporate council did mention, the motion to table indefinitely the managed competition policy was, was certainly unique for this council typically. What is usually transpired, but again, it's, not that it's out of the ordinary, but the council can also table an item to a date specific. As the council knows, certainly this particular policy is, and the, is a significant issue that is tied up or involved in many of our labor negotiations right now, both on the city's side of the labor bargaining team as well as on the union's side, so there is some desire to ultimately, at some point in time, determine if the, this particular policy, this philosophy, is something that should continue to be part of those collective bargaining discussions and negotiations, or is the council, especially when we're back to full staffing by the Aldermen, something that you want to change course on. But as indicated before, the council can even take any action on this, first, they have to take it off the table, and that's the only reason this has, is worded, because if the majority passes this motion, then the council could also consider a motion to put this on a future council agenda for action, and that date would need to be specified by the council. So that's where we are. I'd be happy to answer any other questions the council might have on, on this particular motion, which has been requested by members of the council.
Okay, at this time, though, I think it's probably appropriate, I was told that someone wanted to make a motion to remove it from the table. That would be appropriate at this time. Rob?
I do move that we take consideration of the managed competition policy from the table, and I'll save my comments for why after we have discussion, but that's the motion.
Is there a second? Stephen? A second? We need to take a, a vote on that. Well, we can discuss it at this point, and then we'll, we'll need to take a vote. My question is, are we going to need to do that by roll call, or?
I would recommend.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we're open for a discussion.
Thank you. David, could you just take a minute for everyone's benefit to talk about what it means to table this, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. When we talk about tabling something, a lot of times we're talking about just not doing it, but in this case, we're talking about the opposite, and I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that everybody who's here has the same understanding that we have.
And what I'd like to do is turn to our parliamentarian, the corporate council, and ask him to respond to that question, Todd Greenberg.
And I understand why people are confused, because sometimes I'm at the city's bargaining table during collective bargaining negotiations, and almost always, when, when we are in union negotiations, when one side or the other says, "We're taking something off the table," that means we are withdrawing our proposal on whatever issue is being taken off the table. So that means, okay, we're, we're not going to press this issue during this round of negotiations anymore, it's, we're done talking with it, we're withdrawing the proposal. Unfortunately, when we're talking about parliamentary procedure, we're talking about the exact opposite when we say that we're taking something off the table. You know, because prior to that means that there's been a motion to table something, and that means to defer consideration, and in fact, if you look at the rules that we passed not too long ago, nine months or a year ago, instead of saying that something is tabled, we actually use the phrase, it's a motion to defer consideration, and that's the effect of what the council did last month. It deferred consideration to an indefinite time of whether to adopt a policy on managed competition or not. Now, also under the rules that we adopted a while back, it states that if 100 days come and go and the motion isn't revised, then that substantive issue goes away. Now, obviously, it could be brought back up by a future city council, something like that, but that's the effect of the rules. Now, so we're, I used the same phrase, or suggested the same phrase, tonight, say, we take it off the table, which means, in other words, that we're reviving, if the motion passes, the council is revising, reviving consideration of the managed competition policy. That doesn't mean it's, it's passing, it just means that the council is going to revive consideration of that, and rather than right now, where it's deferred indefinitely from consideration, that makes it ripe again for the council to set a time to actively consider whether or not to adopt a managed competition policy.
I've, I've thought of it as basically a delay, and my feeling about the reason that was done back in January was because there was, the council was still trying to wordsmith this, and we needed, we needed some more time. And that brings up the question I, I would ask you, David, when can we expect a version, the final, final version of this, or, I guess nothing's final until we actually vote it through, but including the last comments we've had, will we have that by the end of the week?
Sure, yeah, yeah. In my mind, even the, the version my assistant sent out January 30th was, had minor changes. We incorporated what we heard, we even made some additional changes, so we're really talking about, you know, minor changes to the draft policy, and we could certainly, with the two extra comments we received, I think a few days ago, we could get out another draft by the end of the week.
Judy?
I, I think we, we need to clarify what this discussion is about. I have a lot of things that I'd be more than happy to say about managed competition, about taking it off the table, and I think one of them is, it would seem that we're taking it, we're not only taking it off the table if we vote to do that, but we're, we know that the next vote is going to be on putting it back on the table. So my question is, I mean, the next motion, we're not just going to take it off, are we, and just let it sit?
We, we would take it off the indefinite table, which, after 100 days, would die, and then there'd be an opportunity to schedule it for a definite date of consideration. So it goes from indefinite to a definite time where it could be voted on and either turned up or down.
Well, that doesn't, doesn't answer, doesn't answer my question. So, when, are we getting ready to, somebody's made a motion that we take it off the table, and somebody has seconded that motion, so we're going to decide, should we take it off the table? But, and, and can that just be the end of it, or are we also going to subsequently name a date certain tonight?
I, I think we, I think we have to. Okay, well.
That's a technical question.
Let's, let's have our parliamentarian answer that rather than a member of the council.
Well, a motion to revive consideration is a prerequisite under the council's rules to substantive consideration of the issue, and I am quoting right now from the council city code, "Motion to defer consideration," and then perends, "to table," unperends, says, "The council may defer a substantive motion for later consideration at an unspecified time. A substantive motion, the consideration of which has been deferred, expires 100 days thereafter unless a motion to revive consideration is adopted. If consideration of a motion has been deferred, a new motion with the same effect cannot be introduced while the deferred motion remains pending. The council member who wishes to revisit the matter during that time must take action to revive consideration of the original motion or else move to suspend the rules." So unless the city council wants to suspend the rules and immediately proceed to consideration of managed competition, which I don't think it can do tonight because of the Open Meetings Act, then the other situation, and the cleaner situation, is to revive consideration of the substantive motion, which is whether or not to adopt a managed competition policy. Now, if the matter gets revived, and that's, remains to be seen, is whether the council votes to do that, then it is in order for the council to schedule this for a specified time for their consideration. Now, because of the Open Meetings Act and the fact that we didn't have 48 hours advance notice of the fact that the city council was going to consider whether or not to adopt a managed pol, comp, uh, competition policy, we can't do it at tonight's meeting. The earliest it could be done would be at the last meeting in February or at a subsequent time if that pleases the council. All that you're doing with the motion right now is to vote to take the consideration from an unspecified time, and then it's in order thereafter to decide what, you know, what specified time to consider it.
Okay, so right now, we're just limited to whether or not to bring it in off the table?
Correct.
And if we do, as I said earlier, as chair, I agree with you, I don't think it'd be proper to consider the, any substantive thing tonight because it hasn't been listed on the agenda.
Correct.
Jennifer?
Okay. Excuse me. I have a question, and I'm going to ask it, I've been trying to decide if it needs to be asked now or, or during what I think is going to be a subsequent motion, because I do think there will be one, so I'm going to go ahead and ask it now. Apologies in advance if it's the wrong time. But, you know, I've had a question all along about timing on this, and I know we're not discussing the policy itself tonight, but since this conversation is all about when we do discuss it, it seems that it's appropriate to ask the question of timing now. So my question is, and I think I asked the same question the last time we discussed this, is, you know, and I guess this is for David, if you can help me understand the timeframe in which, in which this is coming in front of the council, because, you know, it's, it's, it's clear to me that, you know, we have, we have a lot of changes on the council, there's possibility for a lot of future changes on the council, and so I'm, I'm still having a lot of trouble understanding the timing on this, and I'm still having trouble, I guess, understanding the urgency, at least as it appears to be the case tonight, so if you could just address the, the issue as you see it in terms of, you know, the timeframe. Thanks.
I'd be happy to. As the council knows, managed competition as a philosophy, as a practice, as a technique to achieve cost-efficient and effective services, has been discussed, you know, for about, oh, probably good three years, and one of the things that the council has given ourselves, myself and the city's bargaining team, is to place managed competition as a priority as in our labor negotiations. And when I say a priority, and that is, it's a priority to, one, if there's been labor contracts that prohibited the city from ever considering outsourcing positions, to remove that. Furthermore, if union contracts made no mention as to whether or not outsourcing, privatization, managed competition is either permitted or pro, permitted or prohibited, it's been your priority that our labor negotiating teams seek to put in these union agreements permissive language, so that even, even though it's permissive language, it would be something that down the road, as we go through the process of managed competition, which includes a significant outreach, collaboration, coordination, if you would, with the unions, as we look at the cost of providing a service either by private companies or public employees, there is a great deal of time that will be spent looking at them. However, what we've been negotiating at your direction and priority is to, at least in each of these contracts, and keep in mind, we have 10 of them in the city, permissive language, so that at some point in time, if there is a dispute, unfair labor practice or any other charge complaint that could be raised, the labor agreements always give the city that right to consider and to possibly act on outsourcing if it chose to do so. Now, of course, that decision would be the city council's. So at this point in time, our labor negotiations are continuing with a number of union groups, many of which are here tonight, and this is something that our negotiating team is seeking, some confirmation, is that still a priority of the city council? Is that something our negotiating team should continue to seek as a priority to try and get in? All the labor agreements, we're in the midst of negotiating. If it is not, then that's something, you know, we can always change course. But I think that's one of the dilemmas we face right now, is trying to, once again, just see if this council, as it has supported in the past, that priority of at least getting permissive language in the contracts, do you still feel that way? Is that still the direction? And unfortunately, I think the union representatives from the January 14th meeting have maybe taken away different perceptions of what the council was saying by that discussion and by the tabling indefinitely of the managed competition policy. So I hope that that kind of helps from a timeframe of, you know, the impact that's having on myself and our, our labor negotiating team, which is at the table on a number of contracts.
Okay, I see no other. Okay. Judy, you had, you pushed the button first.
Thank you. My, that's, that's really troubling, and in fact, I think it's outside the scope of what we should be discussing tonight. I think that is getting into the issue itself and not of taking it off the table, and that's, I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think this, you know, that we can get into labor negotiation contract issues here. I don't think it's, that's what it's about. But I will say that we had, and I think this is fair enough in talking about taking it off the table, we had a very long, and in my opinion, very substantial discussion about this. Was it, was it two council meetings ago, I guess? And people who supported this policy, if you will, had every opportunity to voice their support and to vote for it. Now, I'm going to try to stay away from discussions about the substance, because I've been told that's not what this is about. But I'm going to go ahead and say, my position has not changed, and my, my opposition before my, I, I flat opposed, and then other people tabled, had nothing to do with the language. It had to do with a lot of other things that, again, I've already been told I can't discuss. But I'm going to consider that voting to detable it, as far as I'm concerned, or untable or whatever the phraseology is, is basically support for this. And my position has not changed, nor has the discussion that we had last time changed. I'm not sure that a policy in any way is even, is even necessary, you know? And, and I have a lot of things to say about managed competition, about outsourcing, because I have done a lot of resource, of research on it, a lot of research. And I, at this point in time, am saying, I'm not changing my position. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I think if, if people wanted, you know, detable this, then I think that's a change. And it's a quick change, and it's a change that I find, I find the timing very, very troubling, especially with a new, with a new council member. I just find this beyond coincidence, that we can't just let this simmer, think about it, research it ourselves, look at a lot of other cities, consider the process, and then also consider a new mayor, a new council, and a lot of other, a lot of other considerations. I think this is far too fast. I, I don't like the way this, I don't like the way this feels, and I will not vote to take it off the table. Thank you.
And I'll be brief with my comments. I will be supportive of the motion when we, when we vote on it here in a few minutes. I, I would say, it sounds like that possibly there could be a second motion in that follows to, to, you know, put this on, on a future agenda. I guess for myself personally, and just given the fact that I've, again, been out of the flow here for a couple of weeks due to, due to some surgery, I guess I would, I mean, personally, I don't know that I would be in favor of doing that tonight, just so that I have more time to look at the revised policy and, and understand and, and acknowledge that all the, the changes have been incorporated and the feedback from, from the alderman. So again, I, we'll be supporting the first motion and, but would be uncomfortable if we have a, a second motion tonight for a date certain. I feel like I want to have more time to, to review those updates. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote to take the motion off the table. Yes vote supports taking it off the table. And Madam Clerk, if you please, take that vote.
Alderman Fizini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
You're not, you're not holding a button, are you? Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know why you're...
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Mila Lamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDade.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Is it seven to two, or?
Seven to two.
Okay. Motion carries seven to two. I move to place the managed competition policy on the April 22, 2013 date, city council agenda for action by the council, whether we want to do it or not.
April 22, 2013.
That being after all the elections and giving us plenty of time, I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to revive this and can next consider it on April 22nd after the elections. Jennifer.
So perhaps it'll be more clear why I asked the question earlier about timeframe. I think, you know, and, you know, I think you just have to call a spade a spade in that case. If, if this is to give an indication of what this council thinks, then the council that you see sitting here, that will be our last meeting on April 22nd. So it is absolutely a timing issue. That's why I asked the question earlier. I didn't feel that there was a compelling response as to, I was looking for a timeframe. I was looking for, for a period of time, days, weeks, months, and I, I just didn't get a compelling, a compelling, a compelling timeframe. And so my concern is, and I'm, you know, taking the opportunity to express that here, is that if, again, I just feel that the policy, because, you know, then the policy will basically be passed or, or not by a council who, whose makeup will change by at least a couple of individuals within just less than two weeks of that. And so to me, at that point, is that, you know, this is, this is such a complicated matter, it deserves, it deserves a lot of work. My gosh, we've, we've been on it for three and a half years. So what's another couple of weeks if it's really supposed to be an indication of, of the council that's up here? I, I just, I can't support the April 22nd date, and I'll be voting now on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Jim?
I know the motion's been made for April 22nd, but, and I'm respectful, respectful of Alderman Sage's interest for a little time, so why not, maybe we're splitting hairs here, but why not earlier in April? Why not the first meeting in April? We, we continue to stretch this out. And so what we're going to be doing here from middle of May, early May to end of April, we're going another two months without any action. You know, the motion is what it is. So 60 days, for 60 days, we're not going to do anything. Is that correct? Is that my assumption?
That's the current motion. Okay. Volker.
Thank you. I voted to remove this off the table because I'm always interested in what people have to say. And as you know, earlier in January, I voted against it because what I saw, I didn't think would work very well, it was still very ambiguous. So my, my vote to take it off the table is not necessarily indicating support, but I, I'd like to see it work on a little bit more. And eventually, I, I mean, I may vote for it or may not. But I just wanted to indicate that. And I, and I do, at the same time, also feel the same pressure for, for, for time. You know, I think this is a fairly serious issue, and I, you know, I, I tend to want to think about things a little longer than most. So I, I mean, I would be in favor of a little more time. It, it doesn't matter to me if it's March, April, or wherever, but I, you know, I think two weeks, as was suggested earlier, on the next council agenda, I think would be a little too quick, you know, to do a, a good thorough job, in my opinion.
Okay, well, the mo- the current motion on the table is the second meeting in April, which I guess is the 22nd. So, Judy.
There's, there's been absolutely no determination at all that a policy is necessary, what the, even the function of a policy is. We've, we've been waiting three and a half years. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure that this council can bind another council. I, I am sure that, yes, it will change, and it will change more than it already has, by at least two more members and, and maybe more. They're going to be implementing something, I guess, if, if it can even be done by, with a new council. It, the new council may have an entirely different philosophy. They, they may want to study the issue themselves. To me, after three and a half years, I, it's just, it's, it's beyond belief. It's just beyond belief. And I'm not going to get into the merits, because I've been told I can't. But I, I see April 22nd as, as just crazy, because it's right before a new council, some new, new members are seated, and I don't even know if we could bind them. So I won't vote for the April 22nd either. And I'm not sure that, you know, I, I just think that there's much, much, much to be said about this. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the vote. I was explaining the, the motion, a yes vote supports reconsidering this in, on, on April 22nd, the second meeting in April. And we'll do a roll call vote.
Alderman Fizini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
No.
Alderman Mila Lamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDade.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Five, four.
Motion carries five to four. So we will take this up again on April 22nd. David, continue to, to work with the council to try to get this specific, so that we have something very specific to vote on, and the next time we talk about this, we will talk about the merits of it. We now move to item 8C, which is City Manager's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2014. And this is something that we will not be voting on. It's just a high-level presentation of all the work that's been going on with staff to prepare a budget. So, David?
Mayor, if, if you don't mind, can I just ask for a little five-minute recess?
Okay. Yeah, and again, we're going to ask that people not disrupt the, the meeting deliberately, especially?
It's up to the council, if you want to take a quick...
I, I can...
All right.
How, how long are we going to do this?
I'm going to move through it as quickly as I can, but...
Okay, let, let's, let's try to hold this to no more than 15, 20 minutes. Can you do that?
Yes, I can. Hundred and sixty-nine million dollars budget, yeah, well, I can do it in five minutes.
I, I'm hearing both things. I'm, I'm going to, let's take a quick bathroom recess here and so on. Please be back in five minutes. and so on. Please be back in five minutes.
Well, and I love our new editor.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah. Let's move it on. I thought maybe you wanted a new frame, too.
You know, this guy is.
More, we've had a very strong and successful local economic development program. When you just look at our efforts this past year with one full-time employee, it's just phenomenal, not only the businesses this individual has been able to assist, but even recently, we've talked about bringing Wirtz Beverage into town, Ashley Furniture, and many other businesses which continue to provide more job opportunities for our citizens and hopefully down the road, continuing to give us additional revenue to keep ongoing control on property tax and any possible escalation. With any budget, especially as we get into long-term recommendations, I think it's also important that our, another major goal is continuing to keep our credit rating high, and even just recently, Fitch Ratings reaffirmed the city's AA+ rating, and our outlook is being stable. We're just a notch below a AAA, but even with all the accolades this company gave to our administration, our council, and the positive aspects of this local economy, they continued to talk about the state of Illinois. And unfortunately, the fiscal problems that our state of government is facing is a drag on our potential to even see our credit rating go up higher. And so, all the cities, all the local governments in the state of Illinois are having, you know, continued impact because of the city, the state's fiscal woes. Let me, if I can, just mention a couple of highlights in the area of what we're trying to do in addressing public safety and infrastructure and culinary water supply. First, in the area of public safety, we have a number of positions that we're proposing to add. Three of these are firefighters, but it, basically, we're adding three firefighters so we could reduce a very high overtime budget for the fire department. What we're finding is not only in the fire department, but in other departments, sometimes at overtime, even though it helps us to kind of keep up and to deal with some of the demands when we have vacancies, but it also can add to the wear and tear and the impact of health on our employees. And these three firefighters will help us bring down the overtime, but also help us give all the overtime, all the firefighters, a little bit of, you know, break from sometimes having to work so many hours. In the area of the police, there is two, two police officers positions being brought on, in the interest of continuing to address our neighborhood needs, continuing to keep up patrols throughout the city, and to deal with all the myriad of services our police provide, and furthermore, because we're also continue to be down on actual people working on a day-to-day basis, either because of illness, work, being out on workman's comp leave, or other things, the, adding two extra police officers, I believe, is a significant investment in continuing to make sure we can deal with the public safety needs out there. From an infrastructure standpoint, as you know, I recommend that we increase our street repair budget by a half million dollars to four million. This coupled with the motor fuel tax of two million gives us about six million dollars we're proposing to spend on road and street repairs, new road projects, and so forth. Furthermore, I recommend a doubling of the budget for sidewalk repair and replacement. We're going up from 150 to 300,000. And we do have a sidewalk master plan that is currently out there. We're still going through that before bringing that to you, but we certainly have an ongoing and a great need, not only in street resurfacing, but in sidewalk repair. And this budget gives us a little, an additional resources to, again, make an impact in, in targeting money in those particular areas. I think one thing that's significant about this budget is we're continuing developing a 20-year capital improvement program. It is, it is unusual for a city of this size not to have such a document. And as you know, we have a number of master plans underway. You'll be seeing the sanitary sewer and stormwater master plan in a couple of months. We're also going to be working this next year on a water, as well as a transportation master plan. And these documents, when they're all put together, will not only give you and the, and the public, a good, clear, and specific view and an understanding of not only what are the infrastructure needs, but also what are the priorities. One of the great challenges we're going to face when all these are completed is how then you, how do you take all those needs and begin to put together a financial plan that will address not only keeping the balance of what is done and when it's done, but also what is the ability of our taxpayers and our community to afford, in a realistic manner, some of those expenditures and investments needed down the road. I also want to point out that we're continuing work on our water supply plan. I've even provided additional resources to continue this effort. The, the water supply plan is, there's a lot of effort currently going on, on analysis and investigation of specific properties, sites where one or more wells could eventually be drilled. And that work will continue. We have funding in here to continue at the appropriate time to look at land acquisition costs, preparatory to any detailed planning and design of other improvements. Other infrastructure needs this year, for the first time, we've got three traffic signals being provided, as well as some further land acquisition for the Hamilton Road project. In the budget message, you'll see some of the highlights of some of these major projects. We are definitely trying to continue to upfront and to spend money on design so that we can better get a handle of what is going to be the cost of some of these big-ticket items. You might recall in the work session, we took, talked about two major projects going over railroads, and that in and of itself can be extremely complicated and law, and require long-drawn-out negotiations with the railroads. Furthermore, though, we recognize that these projects, we need to be aggressive in going after outside revenue to help fund those. And you've read recently of some of the efforts of our staff to look at some of the state grant projects. And also, there's also going to be an effort to look at federal assistance going forward. But you can not only take a look at some of these particular highlights, but the details in the second volume of this particular book. I also have a recommendation in here to help fund a new position, a communication manager. It is in order to, to address the council's priority of citizen engagement and continuing a much more aggressive program of working with citizens, not only at the early stage of a capital project, but all throughout. And to help keep our, our, our community informed of just what the city's doing, the progress we're making, how are we using their tax dollars and utilizing that in a cost, cost-efficient and effective manner. We have got to augment current city services, and part of this person's job will help, not only to help keep our website very much robust, active, complete, but it'll also give us an opportunity to even be more transparent, put more information out there on the website. But that's a, a position we've talked about in the past, but it's critical that we provide staff this additional resource, because we just can't give it the merit it needs, given our size of population, and in order to have a very effective community outreach program. Let me just take a few minutes and mention a few things that are not in this budget at the present time. There is some very large ticketed items that we've been working on, discussing at great length, including the Eagleview Park. The six to $700,000 to complete the construction of that is currently not in the budget. However, we're continuing to evaluate some alternative sources of revenue to hopefully address that six to $700,000. If that's not successful, we are still facing a OSLAD grant contract that expires December 31st. We have plans and specifications complete. We could actually put those out on the street with very little advance notice. So, we are working on trying to address not only the funding, but also trying to recognize we're also up against an expiration date that, in my mind, we don't want to risk loss of this $400,000 grant. We're also in discussions and continuing to look at the need for a, another aerial ladder truck. We feel, and talked with the fire chief, that there's still a great need for that. I'll leave that for another time to talk about some of the issues surrounding the purchase of that particular piece of equipment. As you know, one of the master plans completed recently is the fire station renovation study. We have some very significant needs there. However, what I have done at the present time is I've held back trying to fund an individual piece of that until such time as we can coordinate a very comprehensive finance strategy for all those stations. Many of these have to be done in sequence or in a separate manner, but that particular capital project and some of these others may be tied up into more of a, a, a specific financing project down the road. Furthermore, the solid waste study, as you know, we'll be bringing to you the final study, or the final version of that plan here within a couple of months. At that time, the council will be facing a number of significant policy decisions, and that is, should this service be funded ultimately, and be fully funded by user fees? Whereas even right now in this budget, we've had to increase some of the general fund subsidy, but also should all, should all the services continue to be provided, or should some of the services be changed to a fee basis? So, that solid waste services is also something that will have to be dealt with at later time. And finally, the 20-year capital improvement program. As we continue with these and get the plans completed, we have to look at going to the next step, and that is doing rate studies to see, based on operating and capital needs, what needs to happen by, to the user fees in order to appropriately and adequately protect our investments, whether it be water treatment plants, whether it be beginning to replace some of our old antiquated underground utilities. We'll also be looking at development impact fee studies, and now how that can hopefully perform a much significant role in the future of funding some of these facilities needed for new growth, as opposed for those for existing growth. And then, lastly, with our finance director's help, we'll be looking at how to pull everything together, all these capital needs, and how do we come up with a long-term financing strategy? It's, as you've heard previously, about half of our total outstanding indebtedness will be paid off in 10 years' time. On the other hand, some of these critical needs won't be able to wait for 10 years. But over the next couple of years, we'll be facing some very critical decisions of, once we're aware of the needs and the priorities, is how do we start putting together, I think, a very wise but prudent plan to make further investments in our infrastructure so that that can also drive economic development? It can help assure our residents that they can have a, a comfort level and know that they can rely on continuing to get clean water, and rely on all the underground systems we have, whether it be sanitary sewer, and that ultimately all the above-ground facilities, whether it be roads, sidewalks, and so forth, are in proper condition and don't pose a public safety hazard. That in just a highlight is some of the more significant aspects of this budget. Once again, there is still some significant issues, but this year, we wanted to try and not rely on any general fund balance to help fund any of our operating capital. Furthermore, even though there's some capital lease purchases earmarked, we've tried to only reserve that for high-ticket items, where in the past, sometimes, we were including some lower costs. So, you're seeing a much more pain cash for lower dollar amount vehicles and et cetera. So, over the next month, I will continue to come back and report to you our effort on some of these other items that I mentioned that are still not in this budget, that I think warrant your consideration, as we continue to get more details, more information, so that you can really make some appropriate decisions, whether or not there should be any changes or additions to this particular budget. Once again, I just want to extend to all the directors, the employees, Patty Lynn Silva, our finance director, and her team for getting this, helping get this recommended budget document to you a month early. And this gives you up to two months or more for your consideration. Just want to remind everyone again that on Saturday, March 2nd, we're gearing up for a city council budget work session. And between now and then, I look forward to receiving any questions you have on the budget, so that the staff and I can respond to anything that comes up as you begin to go through this document and begin to come up with any, any questions you might have, so that you can get a better understanding before you're ready to even consider any final adoption down the road. With that, Mayor, I'll turn the time back to you and the council.
Okay. This time, again, this is meant to be a very high-level view, and I don't want to get into any substantive questions. We all need time to get through all these pages. Are there any questions about the timing or how we're moving forward on this? Okay. Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, I didn't see that. Sure, go ahead.
And I apologize if you answered this earlier, but the Citizen Voice meeting that's coming up, where people can come and actually ask the questions about the budget, is this document on the website where they can see it so that they can review it? And if, if they wanted to see a paper copy of it, maybe, is there one available here at City Hall?
It will be posted to the website tomorrow. There will be hard copies, both at the library and the city clerk's office. Yeah, so, and we're also, I think we've even left with you some CDs, so we're even trying to have some of those available as well, so.
Boke.
David, do you have a, an idea what the schedule will be like for budget discussions on March 2nd? Because I do have some residents who are interested in attending, but they'd like to be there for at least a portion that's, that interests them.
Well, again, it's going to be the city council's budget work session. We are bringing in Lynn Montai to help facilitate that, together with the mayor, to put some structure, and, and I think this time, we kind of want to look to Lynn and the council as to, you know, how you would like to most effectively use your time that Saturday. So, that's still kind of a work in progress, as the mayor and I, you know, talk to Lynn, but we'd certainly appreciate your input, too, how you would like to, you know, proceed.
Jim?
Help me clarify that question, that's a good question. The Citizen Voice meeting is focused on the budget. So, that's really the best opportunity, right, for people to come and offer public input? Is that right or not?
I, I think it can be focused on the budget. I, I don't think we have any requirement that that's all people can talk about.
I thought that was the emphasis of it, but...
That would be our desire. But again, we're open to people bringing up other points.
Have we figured out the structure of that Citizen Voice meeting with the thought that, are they able to visit with department heads, city council members? Is this kind of a walk-the-room type thing, or is this a, just as in the past, just a microphone and make your comments and, okay?
Right, and ask for explanations. You know, somebody comes in, looks at a hard copy here and says, "What in the world is that for?", or, "We don't need that." That's their opportunity to, to express that publicly, well before we ever vote on it.
Mayor, if I could, you know, keep in mind, there will still be a very formal public hearing on the budget. However, that is typically held on the last council meeting night, sometimes even just before final adoption. However, that sends the wrong message, I think, to the public. You know, you come and talk tonight, you're going to approve it. That's why the Citizen Voice meeting is being scheduled even before your workshop, so you can hopefully get, you know, a lot more public input in an early stage, before you even start some of your serious deliberations on changes, alterations to the budget.
Karen?
I hope, though, at Citizen Voice, that we're going to start this off with some kind of overview of the budget, and this is a lot to digest, even for those of us who are used to looking at this every year. I can't imagine somebody kind of walking in cold and being able to make some comments, so, kind of helping everyone understand our priorities, where we're putting our money, what we're not able to do, anything you can do like that, and I know it's hard to do in 10 or 15 minutes, but I think, boy, just a Q and A would be really tough.
Well, we'll work on, on that, but remember, this is just the very beginning of, of our discussions. We're going to have the work session a few days later, and there'll be public hearings and, and so on. I'm just glad to see that we've got this budget that much sooner.
All right.
Appreciate that. Okay. There's no action on that. We'll now move ahead. David, you also wanted to talk under discussion about the general street resurfacing project, and I believe we have that map here somewhere.
Thank you, Mayor. What we did want to give you is, is just indicate that since our last meeting and discussion of the preliminary resurfacing list for 2013, we really didn't receive anything substantial that would change the list. However, the list you have tonight is calculated to arrive at $4 million approximately in street resurfacing work. The previous list you had had a $4.5 million price tag, so what we did is we took those lower-rated, half-million-dollar projects off. These are the same 22 that would have been the higher-priority street projects. It is our intent to continue to work on getting these prepared, so they would be part of our March bid package to put out on the street, to solicit bids, and then bring back to you probably the second meeting in April, a contract award, to proceed with the resurfacing of these streets, assuming they can all be afforded within the $4 million this summer. So, once again, we just wanted to bring this and just make sure that you have, we'll go ahead and replace what's out there on the website showing this $4 million list. Keep in mind, staff is still working on developing some of the specifics, specifications for each road, and doing further investigation of underground situations, such as the, the age of some of the sewer lines and water lines. So, there still could be some changes because of that ongoing technical evaluation, making sure that, that none of these should be changed. And it could be additional repairs might be needed in some of these streets, which could still allow, require some of these streets to drop off, to stay within the $4 million price tag. So, that's just an update to let you know we are proceeding, unless the council had any other directives, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you have a...
Could you talk just a little bit about Lutz Road? I know you and David Sage have talked about this, and we've gotten so many emails about it, I'd kind of like to get it out.
Yeah, and let me ask Jim Karch, if he'd come up. First off, we do have a five-year program of, of projects to be funded with motor fuel tax. Lutz Road is one of those out there, but so is Hamilton Bund of Commerce, Fox Creek Road, and the Union Pacific Bridge Crossing, and some others. What we're, what we're sometimes lacking, however, is some of these, say, rural roads, and I'll have Jim get into that, is we don't have a good objective methodology to say, you know, whether it be Lutz Road, whether it be Lafayette, Maple to Main Street, whether it be other streets, how do we kind of work and put together an objective methodology to bring to you and say, "Here's how we rated these"? Because sometimes streets have a much more aggressive citizen outreach, and myself, I've been out to Luther Oaks twice to meet with the people and talk about. But sometimes Lafayette Street, we have a lot of businesses out there, they, once in a while, will call in, but there's, they're also in a similar situation. So, with that, let me have Jim just talk a little bit about some of the unique characteristics of Lutz, or Lutz Road, and some of the other streets we're still looking at as part of a very informal five-year plan.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. You are correct, City Manager is correct in saying that it is one of the streets that is under consideration. It's been on our radar for a number of years. The difficulty comes, and we've addressed this before with the council, that we're looking at that high level, very high-level prioritization, kind of that 20-year plan for how we go about assessing these types of roads. Because, for example, with Lutz Road, we're looking at $2.5 million to upgrade Morris Avenue, the remainder down to Lutz, and then Lutz over to the west, over to the, over to where Greenwood starts to turn. That's a lot of funds to be expended. The ADT on that road currently is 350 vehicles. To put that into perspective, with some of our other roads we're looking at, Fox Creek Road Bridge Project, we've talked about, has 9,000 ADT. The projected ADT on our Hamilton Bund of Commerce would be 15,000 ADT. I'm not standing here saying that's the only criteria by which you make judgment calls. It's important for you, though, to know as a council, that it does type of factors, we have a lot of need out there, and we have to keep all of that into perspective. We have looked, and we've been trying to work with Luther Oaks as well, on other alternatives. Any other thing that we can, as a, as a staff can do, both from a street lighting perspective, maybe that we can add street lighting to be able to help that community, that area out? It is a 16-foot road at this time, 16-foot wide road, with shoulders that do need to be maintained. That's one of the things that we're going to be, in the near future, trying to bring to the council in a city-county agreement, hopefully, that addresses and allows us to maintain, partner with the county, to maintain some of our gravel shoulders. All that being said, staff still is, is coordinating with their alderman, Alderman Sage, to meet with him and then still try to talk through other ways that we can, we can help them in the, and it may be a short term. But again, this is a very long-term solution that is, is difficult with our current resources.
Now, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll just mention, as I normally do, just to remind everybody, there is a liquor commission meeting at 4:00 tomorrow. Probably the only thing that the council might have some interest in, in is the development of proposed text amendment on video gaming, cap, towers, or cafes. I think the council had informally kind of asked that we advance some inordinance, proposed ordinance, to regulate that, and we will be discussing that tomorrow, and, and possibly moving on that. Moving a little bit more slowly is a discussion of server training. We've had a, a proposed ordinance out there. I personally think that we need to back off on that a little bit. We're trying to arrange, make sure that the training's available before we require it. And we want to be very reasonable for Basset training requirements. So, we are looking for input from the licensees. I think we'll bring something forth. We're just not ready to do that yet. So, that's all I had. Any aldermen have a comment? Jim?
Just two quick comments, Mayor. First one with regard to server trainer. You know, I don't think we have to wait until the city council wants to mandate something. I would sure get the message out that voluntary participation, whether it's online, or whether it's through Heartland, or whatever the case might be. I mean, seems like our discussion is going that direction, so, in a way, I'd like to say, "Why wait until something's thrust upon you?". I mean, there's a lot of people with Basset training and, on a voluntary basis, so, my little plug for, encourage people to... little plug for, encourage people to do it in the meantime. There is, there are advantages for classroom versus online, but you've got to start somewhere. Secondly, do you have any plans to fill a one or more vacancy on the liquor commission?
Yeah, I've been preoccupied with another appointment the last week or two, but there is a possibility. I'm trying to look at somebody. The council's been talking about more instance on enforcement, so I have a couple of applicants that, that might help with that. Rob?
I have three things. The first one is, a group of four of us went to Pontiac to look at the tourism that is occurring there, so that we could sort of import some of it for here. And it turned out that there was an unintended benefit on top of that. We found out that in Pontiac, when a retail location in the downtown is vacant, the city moves in and starts to offer to pay the rent on that space, and it moves in local artists to show their wares and operate out of that retail space until the owner can actually rent that space. So it, for not very much money on the rent, the artist pays for, you know, utilities and so forth, the town town looks a lot more full, or less empty. Interesting program, and I've talked to the city manager about it, and it looks like something that we should at least look at as a possibility. In the past, when I was on the uniquely Bloomington Commission, our office did that. We'd locate it somewhere, and as soon as the owner was able to rent our space, we moved somewhere else. And when he was able to rent that space, we moved somewhere else. So in the four and a half years I served on that commission, we had three different locations. It worked out pretty darn well. So that was a benefit of traveling to another community and trying to see what they do on tourism, and we come back with not only that, but some other information. The second thing I have is, I think sometimes we have to celebrate the things we do right. And recently, the city manager shared information about how profitable Frontier Airlines has been. The number, I think, was over $300,000. We were asked to vote to put $100,000 of city money out there as part of a, I think it's almost $500,000 letter credit, that if they didn't earn enough money, that we would reimburse them in order to attract them. The fact that they have been very profitable means we didn't have to use any of our money, and we actually attracted them, and I'm fairly sure we would not have, had we not given them that guarantee. Now, at the time, that $100,000 was possible that we would have to use it. But also, to maintain the 15% discount that our citizens and our companies have on airfares, which is actual because of our central location, and because of our number of flights in and out, and because we have free parking, which now obviously Peoria copied, we had over $800,000 in savings to our corporations, and over $600,000 in savings to those of us individuals who fly. So the decision was, would we spend $100,000 to have our companies and citizens save 1.4 million? Obviously, we voted for it. It wasn't unanimous, but we did vote for it, and it helps us keep our airline viable. And I think we should celebrate the fact that we made a good decision, it didn't cost us any money, and we have saved our companies and citizens $1,400,000. My third item is just something for all of us to consider. We had 10 people who wanted to speak tonight. We, by our policy, allow five. And rather than just drawing names out of a hat, I would think that we would want to give people who've never spoken before first priority, and let the people who speak on a regular basis speak if there is room. But that's just me. I just think we ought to consider that. Thank you.
Karen?
First of all, I'd like to welcome Alderman Mathie, and please ask you, do not clap Alderman Sage on the shoulder, because we've missed him, and it's good to have you back. David, could you make just a couple of comments about the lighting at Harwood Place? I think that there's a sense that maybe the city was being very dictatorial about that, and I, and I think, you know, you were more on a listening tour, and so I just kind of want to make sure that everybody's got the full picture of what that meeting was about, because we did get some emails about it.
I'd be happy to, then. That neighborhood meeting was, was designed, and the agenda and everything, and as we conducted the meeting, was very much to listen to what the residents desired. What would there be their hopes on any plan to address the very old and the very unsafe situation we have with wiring of those old streetlights? We definitely wanted to treat this as a listening session. There was no staff recommendations. In fact, in the PowerPoint, we listed there's a number of options, and before we even begin a detailed analysis, we wanted to hear from them, what would be their hopes. And then, when I saw the article in the Panograph, that's when I contacted the city editor, because they made it out that there was a debate, that the city and the residents were at odds, and that was not the case, because there was no, you know, city staff, here's our recommendation, what do you think about it? It was very much, tell us first, you know, in a very proactive, upfront way, what input do you want to give us before we start any kind of detailed analysis? And we threw all the options up there for them. So the editor felt that there were some valid points, they did run a correction on that. But, you know, the hope would be, is going forward, we'll get more, more hopefully, consideration for when we're trying to just ask first, upfront, for citizen input. It is not characterized incorrectly, as I believe that article was, was in the Panograph, so thanks for asking.
Jay?
Well, since it's come up, I think, you know, the Harwood situation is one that I've been very deeply involved in for two years. And in fact, we had a meeting, David, you and I, and David Byke, and Jim, and some other people, what was it, a year ago, and talked about more meetings. And I do appreciate your apology that I was not invited or informed about that meeting. I truly appreciate that, because it was a shock to me to see it on the website and to be informed by some other citizens. The Harwood situation is a complicated one, but here's my, my take, having worked very closely with the residents and with David Byke, and knowing virtually every single one of them. What they want is very simple, and David laid it out clearly in the article, which is a restoration of their streetlights, not a reproduction, not new lights. David did a great deal of work, and he actually came up with some, even bids, because David's vocation, or whatever, is restoration, and he's very, very good at it. And he's done some marvelous things with houses throughout the east side. So he had gotten some bids on restoring the poles, and then it came down to the lights. And our suggestion was that we work with the local electric, or several companies, get bids, and, and make it happen to fix those lights. So the, if there is a dispute, it's been a very simple one, that the block wants restoration, absolutely does not want to lose those original lights. And what we've heard is a lot of talk, and now we've hired Farnsworth, you know, to do a cost analysis bid for some $4,000, when what David was hoping for, and the block was hoping for, because they have contacted me, that they are, nothing has changed with what they want, is that it's too bad that two years ago, when all this started, you know, we couldn't have simply obtained some bids, we couldn't have simply restored the poles. And finally, the last thing is, now, you know, I, two years later, I'm not sure just where we are, but I hope to, I hope to find out. The last thing I'd like to say is, the country club lights that came out were saved by the city, and that's really a good thing. I mean, what could make more sense than saving one light pole to restore another one? It saves the originals, it helps Harwood Place, everybody's happy. And I'd really like to find out what happened to the bulbs, because those bulbs in the country club lights are critical. And according to Lash Electric, the bulbs were delivered to the city intact. I don't know where they are. But it would be nice if we could use, you know, the parts from the country club lights to restore the Harwood lights. And I, I just don't have anything else to say, except that I thought the Panograph quoted David accurately, that residents uniformly and all want restoration. They never wanted any kind of new lights, they still don't, and I think it's unfortunate that we couldn't just move ahead with some bids and, you know, make it happen that way. Thank you.
Let me just answer, you know, make, one neighbor doesn't speak for everyone on the street. Up until our neighborhood meeting, yes, we had heard from David Byke and Alderman Sterns, but we did not hear from the rest of the neighborhoods. We felt, just like in the Franklin Park playground, it was important to hear from everyone. And respectfully, it is not so simple. We do not have experience with looking at the life cycle costing for refurbishing and recasting these types of lights. As you know, in the strategic plan, we're trying, we're supposed to look at, what is the best value when we expend taxpayer funds for any kind of public improvement, whether it be streetlights, sidewalk, and so forth? So there is definitely a question as to, what is the lowest cost for the, to hopefully get long-term wear and tear of streetlights of this nature? And it's an unknown to us. Hence, we need to kind of properly evaluate that, and then in our next meeting, we'll take that back to all the neighborhoods and share that with them, to help them not only understand that, you know, here's what the costs are coming into, but these are the costs that the council's going to want to look at, and is it, you know, is there differences from a cost, from an estimated life of the improvements? And that's something we want to go back and share with all the neighbors, not just one person.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn, thank you.
It's much longer than I expected, maybe.